And I'd just like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have a very big crowd. We have our elementary, the senior year, right? But first, we are going to start with presenting the colors. The Tassita High School Marines Junior ROTC under the direction of Chief War Officer Lezion.
To declare, the United States of America, and to be very wide open for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Honorable Texas pride, at the graduation of the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Order colors. Ready, cut. Post. Colors. Right, face. Port, arch. Anybody please raise any just for a moment, Silas? Thank you.
Mr. President, trustees, we have a number of commendations that we're excited to present to you tonight. But as always, we're going to start with our inspiring moment. And tonight's inspiring moment has to do with highlighting our Community Learning Center, our CLC facility, which really houses, I think, some of the most impressive and interesting variety of programs that we're able to offer at UMBLE ISD. If you think about it, that facility serves children as young as six months old and serves folks who are grandparents of children in our Sparkville. So really quite an array of services and the crowd present the inspiring moment on the CLC to you. So run up and you will roam the campus.
The Community Learning Center houses four main programs. Employed Childcare is the care of infants to five years of age for boys and teens within the district. We provide daily service to our these children from the time they get here at 6:15 to 5:00 in the morning.
I have one little boy here, he's in the junior classroom. We started him in January, so he was in an in-home childcare before that. And then when it felt like he was ready for a little more structure and classroom setting, we moved him here and we chose this program. We looked at several programs and we chose this one because it is in the district. We got to know the teachers here and also Ann Barber. We really liked it and so when I started him here, I just fell in love with it.
We have three different curriculums here in the center. We use very basic curriculum for infants to 18 months and that is called High Reach. Then for our toddlers, three-year-olds, we use From Street Press. And for our kindergarten age children or those that are going to attend kindergarten, we use a curriculum called Texas Treasure. So I know what to expect, and also we can get here, you know, for you to teach in preschool, that I know what to expect from students and where the curriculum's gone and where they're heading. I'm excited for them.
The goal of the DAP is to provide a structured environment for the students who need to refocus their behavior and let them go back to their home campus and be successful. We provide a very structured environment.
They'll typically be here above 30 days and we're trying to prepare them to go back to the campus and be successful in this stuff. One of the things, I guess, they know that is they're not over here to be punished. I guess if you want to use that term, maybe the fact that they're taken off of their campuses may be punished. But when they get here, what we want to do is help them. And so we want to take them through, with current education, we want to expose them to that again. And of course, we want to do well on that.
I know exactly like what to expect when I came here. I definitely didn't think everyone was going to be like as nice as they are. I was expecting people to kind of be like me. And I went here like I'm going to think a lot more before I make it to campus.
The PACE program is a program for APRA students who may not be as successful as they're on the campus. So we provide a schooling environment for them that is a little bit more structured and they can look at it on the PACE. It stands for Program of Accelerated Instruction. They work with computerized instruction as well as some offline learning.
I want to know, there is a typical PACE student. We have students who are college bound, we have students who are going to the military, who are going to go into the workforce, that have a lot of different goals. They come from different backgrounds.
I'm going to get back on track and do my first graduate degree and then I'll be starting on the American school.
So we have four main programs. Mosaic, which is our 18 plus program for adult students with a disability. Then we have BTC, which is the Behavior Training Program, first from age 22. We have SPAR, which is an interactive preschool program for families and preschoolers. And then we have, which is a speech program for preschoolers.
Well, this is the Mosaic program and we, we're in the workroom and we do lots of things like diet petting and doing box tops and squishing the floor.
And we make runs again, we make dog treats. And we make like ornaments and like other stuff and we go to the mall and then we have a little like shop.
BTC stands for Behavior Training Center. So the students that have ended up on this campus have some level of severe behavior where they're just not able to work through that on their home campus. Best part for me is I love being able to come in and watch them grow and learn new skills and have success with skills that we've been working on.
STEPS is a preschool program centered around intensive coaching therapy. So it's for speech students at their preschool age. And so the only reason they are coming into the district is if they're receiving speech services. But the type of speech services that are seen at STEPS is actually in a classroom. It's like a preschool classroom and everything is about their language development. SPAR is an interactive preschool program for their families and preschoolers. So we have about 300 families that run through that. It's free. It's for anyone that lives in the UMBLE ISD attendance. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have a student with a disability. And so it's a really neat thing to watch because the parents are in there with them, they're interacting. So they're learning their, you know, school-based behaviors and they're doing activities and they're doing crafts and they'll go out to the community. When your child approaches school age, it brings them out and you dynamic, a partial relationship with them. So it's neat for them to be able to experience some of those school experiences with them , stuff they didn't know before.
If you feel to indulge me, I do want to introduce you to some of the stars of the video who are here this evening. First, the principal of the CLC, Tammy Alexander. The principal of our Cambridge School, Tammy Varlin. And one of our phenomenal teachers at the DAP, Joe Kelly. I also want to recognize, I hope you noticed the high-quality production in our inspiring moments. And I'm really proud because now all of our inspiring moments are being prepared by the audiovisual practicum class at AHS. So let me introduce you to some of the filmmakers. Alexis Banda, Alexis Gilstan. Rebecca Smith. And Emily Zaniga. You guys did a phenomenal job. Thank you so much for taking us on this year. And by the way, they could not do it without a phenomenal teacher. So let me introduce you to their teacher, Mr. Jeff Mack. Okay, and lastly, I do want to recognize, she does more than just turn the button or click the mouse to run the videotape. She really has become a mentor to our AHS kids who are producing the inspiring moments and that's where I'm at. Okay, we're debuting a new regular part of our commendations at board meetings tonight. And that has to do with featuring some of our students' achievements and accomplishments. And this really is at the request of and is the brainchild of our board president, Robert Sparkle. So if I may, Mr. President, I'm going to turn to you and ask you to explain to all what this is.
Thank you, Dr. Sconzo. We're launching a new feature, as Dr. Sconzo said, at the beginning of this month. You'll see a few slides coming up and they'll sit in this part of the meeting, I think, as we go on here after the inspiring moments. And basically, it's a consolidated spotlight of major achievements from the prior month in the area of academics, sports, fine arts, and service learning. The principals have been asked to submit information from their campuses on what we're calling stellar standouts. Ms. Mount came up with the name. I'm not that great. Great job on there. And it's for when students place first in the district contest, advance to various post-district contests, receive rewards from organizations outside of the district, complete a major learning service project, things of that nature. So really kind of standout events. And the reason I asked Dr. Sconzo if we could do this is so many times, I know for myself, and I think I'm fairly knowledgeable with things that go on, but I find out about things a month later that, oh, did you know students from this school or this student or this class or whatever, in whether it's fine arts or sports or whatever, did these wonderful things. And I'm thinking, sometimes I'll read about them in the newspaper, but it's like so far after things, I just thought, it'd be nice that we can highlight our students in this type of venue so that, especially that it's streamed and recorded and people can see them later on. And they will be archived on the district website so that you can always go back and take the book. Because our kids across the board, elementary through high school, just do some phenomenal things. And I think we're all so very proud of them. And I think sometimes we don't always know about some of the things they're doing. It's a lot. So this, we hope, will give us a chance to see that on a regular basis. So Dr. Sconzo, Ms. Mount, and your staff, thanks so much for putting this together and we continue on at least this year. Thank you very much.
We appreciate your initiative.
My pleasure. Okay, we are going to go to the other commendations.
We're going to continue. So as we continue to look at our stellar.
You thought I was going somewhere else, right?
I was, sorry to interrupt.
Actually, I was going to let you do the administration comments, so I wouldn't miss you for the third month in a row.
Now, when we get to that, we guarantee you'll miss that. So, so, and we're looking at our stellar standouts. We're really, really excited to present to you, and I asked Jerry Mondaire to go to the podium first, to announce our first superstaffers for this new school year. And then she will be followed by Jamie Mount and Kathy Arora and Debbie Okum as we recognize all of our elementary teachers of the year. So, Mr. Sparkle, you will join me up there.
So just a reminder, each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held and three honorees receive additional recognition at the school board meeting, including a $200 gift card to Pappas Restaurants, thanks to an award sponsor. And the sponsor for this month is Waste Management. Lisa Duddy, would you join me up here? Waste Management is a huge supporter of our students and has been for many, many years. Not only have they made significant impact in our elementary science education, Lisa serves in the executive committee for the UMBLE rodeo. And as you know, those proceeds go to sponsor or award grants to our students who innovate and creative programming. They also sponsored our recent principal for a day event and then also for tonight's event. So thank you very much. Lisa, would you help? So first, we're going to honor our elementary superstaffer tonight. Tanya Pounds, Timbers Elementary. Tanya, will you and your principal come up to the podium? Tanya's making her way. I'll tell you a little bit about her. She's the elementary principal secretary and bookkeeper. And those who nominated her said, her title was principal secretary and bookkeeper, but she is so much more than that. She's our go-to person for supplies, help with purchases, bats, snakes, toilets, electricity, and more. She does it all. Tanya works each and every day for writing every one of the things they need to do their job, with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. We could not accomplish what we do each day without her. Okay, the next one is Karen Allison, at UMBLE Middle School. Karen, would you like to come up? Those who nominated her said, Mrs. Allison is closing the gap towards excellence by going above and beyond to provide assistance to her parents and her staff when locating dropouts, registering students, and the day-to-day activities on our campus. She's always willing to lend an extra hand to make sure that we are providing the best service possible to our parents and students. And our last category is for support staff, and that would be Kim Clark. Kim is a child intrusion supervisor and those who nominated her said, Kim goes the extra mile in managing food safety and sanitation practices for the child intrusion department. She maintains close contact with area health department administrators and makes sure So we have more great things to celebrate tonight. UMBLE ISD has more than 2,500 teachers, but only 44 of them have the distinguished honor of being named Campus Teacher of the Year for 2014-2015. Last month, Campus Teachers of the Year from middle and high schools were recognized. Tonight, Campus Teachers of the Year from the elementary schools are being honored. These are remarkable educators who were voted on by other teachers at their school as senior models for the profession. Assistant Superintendent Kathy Arora will now call out the names of Teachers of the Year from the school's upper vertical team.
Thank you, welcome. I know all of you know that we have outstanding teachers at UMBLE ISD who inspire children to love learning and who provide students with the confidence and motivation to achieve their goals. It is an honor tonight to recognize the following individuals who have been singled out by their campuses as being teachers whose impact reaches beyond their classroom walls. One thing we know about our Teachers of the Year, they influence students far into their lives and positively shape the culture of their schools. So as I call your name, would you please come up to define and remain a teacher like this college and all the others? Atascasita Springs, Teresa Davis. Eagle Springs, Kyle Kurtzner. Falls Creek Elementary, Kathy Jones. UMBLE Elementary, Eliana Sadeo. Jack Fields Elementary, Lisa Long. Lakeland Elementary, Kathy Beck. North Belt Elementary, Grace Laura. Miss Laura is also being honored as district finalist, as she's not able to be with us this week. Oaks Elementary, Linda Mett. This night, and she's not able to be here tonight either, we'll get her plaque to her. Parklex Elementary, Lisa Covinas. Ridge Creek Elementary, Chad Kanesic. Mr. Kanesic is also being honored as a district finalist. River Pines Elementary, Kimmy Winslow. Timbers Elementary, Brenda Kleinhans. And Whispering Pines Elementary, Sutton Simon. Thank you and congratulations. And now Assistant Superintendent Deborah Yocum will now recognize Elementary Teachers of the Year, Herbert.
Thank you all for being here. I've heard it said, one good teacher is worth more than a thousand books. In our system for education, the most important component is the teacher. Great teachers make the difference. They make the difference in how children feel about school and learning. Great teachers help children believe in themselves and take them further in their education than just by learning. Opening doors for students and expanding their world is just one of the small feats that teachers accomplish. I am honored tonight to present the following outstanding teachers. From Bear Branch Elementary, Christina Spears. Miss Spears is also being honored as a district finalist. From Deerwood Elementary, Kristy Atkins Keaton. From Elm Grove Elementary, Tracy Ferris. Miss Ferris is also being honored as a district finalist. From Foster Elementary, Amy Hitchcock. From Green Tree Elementary, Carolyn Sprig. From Hidden Hollow Elementary, Courtney Press. From Lake Shore Elementary. From Lake Shore Elementary, Suzanne Barker. From Maple Brook Elementary, Lisa Guyman. Ms. Spears is also being honored as our district elementary teacher of the year. From Oak Forest Elementary, Laurie St. Clair. From Pine Forest Elementary, Irma Silas. From Shadow Forest Elementary, Debbie Hunt. As a district finalist as well. From Summerwood Elementary, Melissa Denell. From Willow Creek Elementary, Renee Copeland. And from Woodland Hills Elementary, Rachel Scott. And a group photo. I want to thank everyone for being here one more time. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. At this time, for all of you teachers who may have children tomorrow, tomorrow is Children's Education, if you didn't remember that. They may need to leave, so if you would please give all of our 20 members...
All right, we're gonna move on to questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matter. Okay, and we do have one, Ms. Young, that you gave me. I met her just before the meeting. Ms. Newman with the American Heart Association.
Good evening. Wow, all of those Teachers of the Year, there's a lot to follow. Well, I'm with the American Heart Association, and I have come today with some of my corporate parachute relocated on me to provide an update on the partnership with Umbel ISD and the American Heart Association from last school year as we launch into our partnership for this school year and the upcoming Heart Walk. So I love the stellar standouts because as we think about school districts that care and take action for student wellness and staff wellness, Umbel ISD is absolutely a stellar standout in the state of Texas. We have some really exciting results to share with you this evening. We really work with the camp with the district in two different programs. One is called Jump Up For Heart and Hoops For Heart, and that's with the elementary schools. And the other is the Heart Walk, which is coming up in just a few weeks. Last year, we had a total of 19 campuses complete the Jump Up For Heart program, and 11,000 students received the Heart Healthy message and sent that message home and talked about it with their families. And together, those 11,000 students raised a total of $76,000 for the American Heart Association. In addition to that, every campus participated as a staff wellness initiative in the American Heart Association's Heart Walk, raising $31,000 for a combined total of $107,000. And that money will be spent to achieve the American Heart Association's goal, which is to create a world full, free of cardiovascular diseases and disease by stopping the epidemic rate that people are dying of heart attacks in this country, and also to help people create cardiovascular, these healthier lives so that they live stronger in their life. We very much appreciate your partnership. I'm always brief at these meetings, but we will all be at the Heart Walk, so if you would like to hear a lot more details about all of that, we would love to share that with you at that time. So thank you very much. We do have the plaque to present. It's artwork from one of our area transplant survivors.
I'd ask Mr. Rush to come with me, even though he didn't invite me to walk on his team this year. Even though I can't, we're inspiring new people, but he's been on my team.
Love for you to be on ours.
But he's been on the Heart Association now last year and really invited us to talk.
That was the only one we had on the document. So now we will move to comments by individual board members. Ms. Conrad, may I start to elect you?
Absolutely. Thank you for that inspiring moment. I know sometimes it's hard to explain anything, all the programs that are at the CLC, so it'll be a wonderful way to share that with community members that are asking. And just a reminder to us that how we're serving those non-traditional students. So thank you, CLC leaders and team members. One other statement I want to make with regard to inquiries that are made by board members, and I felt the need to say this again, I know Mr. Sitton mentioned it before, and speaking about the program evaluation committee and some of the work that the committee's doing, but I get a lot of feedback when we ask, it's called a board inquiry, is how it comes back to me, and it's kind of seen as a negative connotation. So I want to make sure that you understand that when we make an inquiry, it's likely more to understand your program and what all that you're offering, so that we can be, from an angle of providing more information to those who are asking. So most of the time when I'm making a board inquiry, it's probably coming from someone who's asking something that I don't understand. So please don't see that as a negative thing. I want to understand your programs better so that I can provide a better answer to those who are asking me about your programs. And so that when I read articles and papers about other districts and what they're doing and how they're serving their students, I can know, oh, we're also serving our students in that way. In fact, we're also doing this. So again, I just want to reiterate that because I seem to get that message back a lot, and I'm just striving to understand your programs more, so I can break under them. All right. That being said, the only other thing I wanted to mention had to do with election day coming up. Really soon, early voting starts next week, so hopefully you're all already registered. And just to remind them that you can be involved not only in our voting, but we must still have them. We do have a district legislative committee coming up to be meeting soon in November, so hopefully you consider being a part of that. And everybody next week for the November 4th election, so make sure you get a vote.
Thanks, Conrad. Mr. Director Cunningham.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. This is a night of thank you, so I want to thank all the teachers for their awards. I want to thank the Heart Association also. Thank you, that's a lovely picture. And I want to, if you can just bear with me, Mr. President, just for, I might can do this in two minutes. Ms. Mount has helped me out a lot. I wanted to give some thanks to Keith Heath, Rob Sitton, Angela, for your support. Peggy, thank you so much for the last-minute shopping that I had you do. Brock Starford and Anne Brent, thank you for your support. And Dr. Scanzo, thank you so much. So what am I saying? It's because of this great team right here that during the TASD convention, I was fortunate enough to be elected as the TASD director, 144th for the state of Texas. And if it wasn't for Dr. Scanzo saying that this is gonna be good for not only me and the district, how did we never done? But last but not least, I want to thank Jamie Mount and your department. Because I asked Jamie to give me three minutes and 51% of the vote. He gave me 2.35 and 65% of the vote. So I wanted to say, Jamie, thank you and your department. I'm looking forward to starting on some work in Austin. So with that, Mr. President, I want to give it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dragon Alliance?
Just a quick comment of congratulations. I was so proud to serve this year as the delegate, so I was one of those folks that wrote for you. I did videotape it, in case somebody wants to listen in two minutes and about 50 seconds. Probably your best speech you've ever given. It really was. It was very impressive, and we're real proud of you. So, thank you. It's all Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Just to add my congratulations as well, after reviewing the speech, actually for the first time today, one thing's for certain, I'll never be running against Charles Cunningham for anything. Because he earned it outright, no questions asked. It was just a fantastic thing. So it's great for our district, great for you. Congratulations. That's all.
Charles, I want to also completely congratulate you. Well done. The interview answered it, I don't know if you anybody would have, but it was really kind of a big deal that Charles put his name up and ran against somebody who was put up by another group that was actually originally with Rich. And Charles winning by that percentage of votes is a huge deal. So, I want to, although Lisa's last, Lisa Daltrey, she's been a friend of mine for years. I used to represent waste management years ago. Now I actually want to say it again. Waste management is a really wonderful company for our community. They've done so much for our school district, and every time we've asked them to do something, they've stepped up. And so, with Lisa and Waste Management, it seemed to be sort of our superstamper. So this is a great thing to do, so I want to thank Lisa and Waste Management for everything they do for us here in Austin. Fortunately, she's the campus teacher of the year, so it's great to see those wonderful teachers that we've got. And although, probably should wait for this, but I'll do it now. We've got these cards. This is not too early for everyone to put on their calendar here. We have the Umbel ISD Livestock Show and rodeo, and the auction coming up. January 30th and 31st is the rodeo cook-off. Remember calendars now, people, this is a wonderful event. February 3rd is the expo, February 4th and 5th is the livestock show. You see what our students accomplish, which is amazing. And in the auctions on the 6th, you buy cal, there, the mic, or other final. February 6th and 7th is the rodeo itself, and we're gonna have some wonderful performers there, and as always, it's just a great time to have fun. So, with that on the calendar now, you're hearing me talk about it, but wouldn't be just ready for it because it is a beautiful time. And so I have, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Beth. Mr. Sidney?
Well, I'm gonna dino what a lot of folks said, but before I do that, I believe they might steer at the auction instead of cows, so just a quick regard. Farm animals evolve, probably. So I too, I too want to congratulate Mr. Cunningham. We were very proud of him. The night before his speech, we were at dinner, and I kept prodding him to, you know, rehearse with me, and he said, "No, no, I can't, I can't do that. I've got it going on in my mind, and we'll have to wait until after tomorrow and see what happens." So, very proud of you, brother. You did a great job, and I think that our community will stand up and recognize that as well. So we appreciate you. The Heart Association, thank y'all for being here and the partnership that we have. All the Teachers of the Year that have already left. But then, I want to go back, finish this with the inspiring moments. If you have not seen some of the things that that mosaic has put out, it's incredible. The, you can, you can literally, there are small businesses, they come to our bizcoms sometimes, and there are small businesses that will actually buy whole batches of their notepads, and whole batches of their ornaments, and things like that to give away as gifts. I know the foundation has done some of that for some of the Teachers of the Year in years past. My wife's done that to give away as gifts. I mean, it's amazing what they're doing with those folks with the abilities they have. So I'm just grateful to belong to a school district that gives opportunities, I think Ms. Conrad said it best, to those students that sometimes get missed. So I really appreciate the opportunity to be here before that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sidney. I just want to add a couple of things. First, we had College Night, it was held last Monday at City Center once again. And I'll tell you what, this man who chairs up that particular event each year, along with some of the other folks on the council PTAs, Ms. Clark, Michelle Cesares, Ms. Crowe, and Starford, and Ms. Prescott, having sponsored Kingdom Park. And they have a lot of help, obviously, but they spearheaded this thing for years and years. Got a chance to go over there again this year for a bit. It's just amazing. I mean, they had over 100 colleges and universities that represented there to be there for our students and their parents. And we had over 3,000 students in attendance during that 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. window. Mr. Kramer was there too, appreciate his help in being there. And he can attest to all the hard work that volunteers put in. It's just a great event, great event for the kids and for the parents, helping them plan if that's the way they want to go. I'd also like to again commend our good friend and great volunteer, Mr. Herb Warden, who last year got the Heroes for Children Award. That was just, he, he tell you what, he make it hard just for the whole stuff he does. So thanks, Herb, for everything you do. And Mr. Cunningham, I just want to say, haven't had the opportunity to stand in the back of that room while you were doing that speech. That was something else. It was, Mr. Anglock, just, when you started about your granddaddy, I knew you had. It was done. I mean, it wasn't very convincing. So that was great. And Dr. Benjamin, who was visiting in the audience with us, I just want to welcome you formally. Challenging Dr. Scanzo this year, she works on her superintendent certification. So thank you for being here with us. Great to have you here. And yeah, is Ms. Allison? And, yeah, is, Ms. Alexander, did, did Ms. Alexander leave, or was Harlan that I left?
Uh, I tell you, I was glad we got a chance to do that, and I had, uh, talked to Dr. Scanzo about doing, I was there about a month or so ago, and I've been there other times, but it's just, as everybody here has said, who's been there, and Mr. Sidney just said too, and Ms. Hunter, um, all the things that they do at the Community Learning Center, it's hard to, I mean, you do need to score, and, and they do it so well, um, and families there in the audience, I did got to see her that day, I was there too, and just the great, great job they do in so many realms, and it's, it's just breathtaking what they achieve. So that was great to see it, and, and yes, and Ms. Harlan, that'd be a great place to go, and say, you know what, you want to see this, here you go, here's, here's the one for the, for the inspiring moments, because it's just, just, so thank all of those guys for what they do, when you go back, tell them sorry we missed them, when we were all kind of giving them some more pat on the back. So I'll end with that, and I am not going to forget to turn to my left and ask the administration if they have any comment, you better have some, folks.
It's a miracle right here in here.
Yeah, I know, pretty much.
I do, uh, you all mentioned the word proud, and, and I want to add my pride too, for all of you, because really, we're a part of a school district and a governance team that, that has much luck represented at literally every level, so tonight we're celebrating Charles, uh, being elected as the State Director for the Texas Association of School Boards. If you don't know, Charles is already and simultaneously the president of the Gulf Coast Association of School Boards, and at the national level, the National, uh, School Boards Association, Ms. Conrad will be making a presentation at their annual conference, uh, this spring, and she'll be doing that with this man. So I, you know, thanks, as if you all don't give enough right here at home, you all give so much more beyond home, it, it makes a difference for our vision someday for all. Lastly, I do want to introduce Matt Smith. Uh, we were, I was very proud last year that every single one of our campuses in UMBI SD, uh, received the designation from the Anti-Defamation League as a No Place For Hate. All of our campuses are currently in the process of re-upping for that designation this year, however, this year, we've kind of added to the challenge, and we're going after a district designation from ABL, and so Matt, if you would just share with the board briefly about that.
Sure, thank you for the time tonight. Uh, we are very excited that we did have a hundred percent of our schools designated as No Place For Hate schools last year, we are on target to, uh, reach that goal again this year, with a new goal of having the overall district designation of No Place For Hate, and the way that we'll do that is we are now addressing all of our non-campus buildings, so like Administration Building, the I S C, Child Nutrition Warehouse, Transportation, Maintenance, the Police Department, and putting activities in place throughout this school year that will happen for those staff members, so that all of those buildings, just like our schools, can be having activities that go on throughout the year, that work to address, uh, bullying prevention, overall, uh, safety and climate initiatives in those buildings, just like we do in all of our schools. So with that, each, uh, building will have the opportunity for the staff to sign what is called the Resolution of Respect, and that's, that's what this poster is on the other side of the room, and I'll thank Linda Cooney, who is our, uh, coalition member, but she's also, uh, representing the Administration Building, and she has worked to bring this over here, and we invite the board members, uh, if you see fit to sign this resolution tonight, as we kick off the signing for the rest of the Administration Building after this date, of this particular poster, but we are very excited about having all of those buildings, uh, taking place this year as we work towards this overall district designation of No Place For Hate, so I appreciate the time very much.
And thank you, and trustees, if you were to see it before you go up, sign the resolution, and will then follow through with all of the employees signing this, right? Thanks again, Matt. And Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Scanzo. Okay, we're gonna move to the next session, section of our agenda. Ms. Conrad, I'm gonna clear it for you for...
Mr. President, as to the personnel, I move that the Board approve the Administration's personnel recommendations as presented with the agenda.
Second. Mr. Sidney, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
As to the personnel, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the replacement redemption meeting as presented in closed session.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Conrad, uh, any motions on minutes?
As to the minutes, I move that the Board approve the minutes for the regular board meeting on September 9th, 2014.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And, and I'm sorry, abstentions, one abstention.
As to the minutes, I move that the Board approve the minutes for the special board meeting on September 16th, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you, Ms. Conrad. Now we will move to updates on board associations and committees, and first up, advertising, marketing, Mr. Rushing.
Yes, sir, um, uh, last meeting, um, as I mentioned, last month, we actually focused on some work that Mr. Kite was doing with, uh, some of the, uh, school donation programs that involve signage as recognition to support the school, uh, consistency and manner in which that's applied across the district, and to, uh, to, to, to roll out those processes district-wide, um, including high schools and middle schools, and so it felt, felt good, the committee, in terms of what that process looked like, uh, I felt it was going to be rolled out, uh, for those schools that were interested in, in undertaking those endeavors, and so, uh, we felt good about that process, and that was our focus of the month.
Thank you. Party Committee, Mr. Cunningham.
Uh, Mr. President, this is all the Port audit committee, will be meeting next month, uh, I believe on the seventh, uh, Tuesday.
Uh, next, board and superintendent evaluation, Mr. Vez.
Just those minutes, uh, from last month dealt with, uh, finalizing, uh, Dr. Scanzo's evaluations for next year, um, I think we're right now in a hurry to pattern, waiting to hear back from consultants and editors, uh, issues, uh, whether we will be able to read this plan until we do this.
Thank you. Mr. Cragerley, go with the crowd.
The committee met last, uh, Thursday, um, thank you for seeing the minutes out of October, and we should have received those, if it was helpful, or was not able to attend, I would accept it, and Mr. Sidney, I've asked Mr. Sidney for the updates, it seems.
Okay.
Mr. Rushing, Mr. Sidney.
All right, uh, yeah, Mr. Rushing and I were there, uh, made a few notes, because it was relatively long meeting, uh, a lot of important stuff, uh, we, uh, first looked at the initial recommendations concerning capital outlay with regards to the final phases of the bond 2008, uh, uh, bond funds that are still available, uh, and started the process of developing a long-term building plan, uh, uh, that, uh, those conversations included land purchases, Passor recommended new schools, timing, uh, uh, and amounts of the final two bond sales, uh, which we'll be going over, uh, more in detail with the Finance Committee later this week, uh, uh, Mr. Kendrick, uh, shared with the, shared with us the district's replacement cycle for facilities, equipment, and things of that nature, um, let's see, lastly, uh, there was requests made to get a legal opinion regarding a new RFQ for architects for, uh, uh, building projects going forward, uh, the legal opinion is that we can do that, uh, now the idea is looking to have, having Mr. Brown and Ms. Lynn with the timing of that, uh, as far as when the next bonds would be sold, uh, and if we have missed time to get that taken care of. Uh, outside of that, we'll meet again, uh, we've got a shorter turnaround, I think we'll meet again in about three weeks, uh, so we hope to have a comprehensive long-term building plan to present to the rest of the board, uh, relatively soon, because we need to, uh, decide on what schools need to be built and when, and prioritize that, that issue.
Mr. Cragerley, do you think we'll need to, uh, workshop to discuss that in detail?
You know, uh, we may, but let's see how this next meeting goes.
Ms. Vez, Education Foundation.
Um, I've already stolen one under the announcement of the livestock show, it's cautious, but, um, at a safe date, please, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, down the, have it, the cards right up here, I will look here, for the meeting for the, for the other contributors.
Thank you.
All right, Finance Committee, I will report, uh, we have a meeting coming up, uh, Thursday, four thirty, can, here in this building, and we have a, a rather lengthy agenda for that committee, uh, as Mr. Sidney, uh, mentioned, one of the things on the agenda, we will be talking about bond sales, capacity, and all those types of things, uh, obviously by hand and hand, the work of the building community, Mr. Vez. Um, and one other thing that's on our agenda that we're going to consider is, it's something that the Audit Committee has had for quite a while, and I think are a really good idea, and, uh, and so, uh, discussed with, with me to kind of pursue the same path with the Finance Committee, and that's, uh, to put a, a formal committee charter in place, and I think it's a great idea, and we'll have to look at it after things go. Dr. Scanzo, I wanted to ask you if you would work with the other, other board committee chairs about working on getting charters put in place, the other committees that, that may be in effect by the end of this year, I just think it's, it's very helpful to have that, that structural framework, so, come on, uh, put that on your, on your plate. Okay, and that's, uh, that's it, and we'll have more, obviously, to say next time around.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask you, again, what time is this Finance Committee meeting?
Yeah, you need to be there, uh, four thirty. Why this one's four thirty?
I didn't want to make sure.
This one's five? Okay, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, it's four, it's four o'clock, Mr. Sidney.
Good, we usually have them before, but, I mean, you know, I'll go with it.
Okay, it's third, it's third.
Mr. Cunningham gets all the shots now, right?
State Director, State Director.
I ask questions.
Okay, well, uh, you, uh, Mr. Rushing, Legislative, I mean, you know.
We met when Cunningham wants to meet.
You met today, right?
We met today, uh, actually, five o'clock before this meeting, um, we, we now have a date, and so, um, I'm sure all of you by now have at least seen the save the date invitation, uh, for the first district-wide Legislative Committee, uh, Community Meeting, uh, take place Thursday, November 13th, seven o'clock, uh, via Tascasita High School Auditorium, uh, so we worked through, uh, this afternoon exactly what, uh, our agenda will be, uh, includes, uh, who's Representative Dan Huberty, who will be, um, opening up the meeting for us and talking about things from his perspective and his peers and colleagues' perspect, perspectives, uh, heading into the session, um, uh, in the spring, and so we'll, we'll be ready for that, and hope to see, uh, all of you here, uh, or at a Tascasita High School on November 13th.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Program Evaluation Committee, Mr. Sidney.
Yes, sir, um, as of yesterday, all, all of the audits and three-year plans that we've put together, or we've had put together, should be on the website, attached to the programs, those include GT, uh, CTE, RTI, uh, dyslexia, special ed, IV, uh, Spanish immersion avid, and early college, um, so, uh, if you go to the departments, you can pull up those, uh, all of you should have a copy already, but, uh, those should be on the website, available for anyone to see, uh, let's see, this, uh, looks like this week, uh, their year-to-date budget reports are due, uh, fiscal budget reports for last year and this year are due, and, uh, and then as a committee, and I'll get with, uh, Mr. Vez and Mr. Cunningham, uh, and along with Dr. Price and Ms. Atwood about, uh, timing of this, but we'll begin interviews with program directors starting in November to go over these plans.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, next, Ms. Conrad, Technology and Data Governance Committee.
Yes, sir, we, uh, met our regular election meeting last Tuesday, and, uh, so provided an update on the computer replacement, that deployment, uh, they've been calling it scheduled, uh, and they're down to, what, the last few groups of elementary schools, and then we'll kind of cycle back and hit a punch list, and make sure everyone has the right scruples they need and so forth, and that's session one. Uh, we continued our discussion of the technology plan, um, and the importance of establishing standards, like constructional standards and operational standards, and so we, uh, took a look at those proposed standards, as well as some preliminary financial models to go along with them, and, uh, so we'll be looking for, um, the technology department meeting with their district technology planning committee, and then we'll be posting recommendations to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to... Next, we move to the consideration of items placed on the consent agenda, and, uh, as, as you know, we have an opportunity to look at items presented, uh, by the administration for our consideration, head of the meeting, and have an opportunity to ask questions and to answer, and back and forth, and, uh, in many cases, come to satisfaction that the people are ready to vote on it, so those are the things that are approved and put on the consent agenda. Okay, and, uh, Ms. Conrad, if you will help me along as I go through and read these, as to which ones are consent and which ones are pulled for individual discussion, okay, first, starting under governance considerations, we have the actual, uh, the action item for Tassby Policy Update 100. Okay? The next, uh, section, Superintendent's Division Reports Considerations, A, interlocal agreement for after-school services. Okay, that's cool. Uh, next, uh, a lot of those, uh, Learning Division Reports Considerations, A, exception to elementary class size limits waiver. Uh, under purchases exceeding fifty thousand in the aggregate, B, Syriza Solutions. College Board. The IV organization. Advent, uh, yes, via individual determination. Technology Services Purchases. Item G, Special Development from William Marsh Rice University. Bridges Transitions. All, individual. Uh, next, item I, First and Math Online Program. Okay, we got two individual on that, and under, next section, Financial Services Division Reports Considerations and Purchases, item A, Tax Refunds. Tax rate adoption. 2014 Tax Roll. Next, item D, Budgetary Amendments. Okay, uh, next, we have one on Resources, so you, to Support Services Division Reports Consideration, this is under purchases exceeding fifty thousand in the aggregate, twenty-five thousand individual. First, item A, Contract for Various Goods and Services Related to the Operations of Maintenance and Grounds Department. That's consent, and next, under District-wide Considerations and Purchases, number A, Signs, Banner, Marquee, Scoreboards and Related Services. And, under purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars, Graphing Calculators and Accessories. Ms. Conrad, if you would, help me out, like, give me those back.
All right, Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I move that the Board approves the following items by... Mr. President, as to the consent agenda, I move that the Board approves the following items by consent. Under Learning Division, items A, B, F, and G. Under Support Services Division, item A. Under District-Wide, items A and B.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Financial Services.
We can just amend it.
According to the motion, it's already been signed.
Amendment motion.
I'm going to amend to add the Financial Services that Ms. Conrad left off the order that we...
Items A, B, C, D.
So we can vote on a motion. Seven zero. Now we have the complete consent agenda motion before us to second it. All in favor? So, now we're going to go back and... Under Governance Reports and Considerations, we do have, there's no action items, but we do have a board report. Mr. Lopez, we need a motion first, a vote second, okay. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, Dr. Stanz, I apologize for making this too earlier, because we have as well. Two questions for you. First question deals with the expansion of jurisdiction of our police force. Second question deals with the expansion of the shadow language of our chapter twenty-one, nonchapter twenty-one contracts. Which one do you want to take first?
I'd do it, please, first.
Why are we expanding the jurisdiction of our police force extensively? It's limited to buildings, a thousand feet of our buildings, property within the district, basing it on jurisdiction throughout. If you look at the changes...
Ms. Brad, could you refer me to the...
Absolutely. You go to the PDF, it's the letter I, page one seventy-three, which is where it starts. Is this just the Tasby, we just basically dumped the changes in here?
Yes.
Okay. What I would like to do is I would like to have a further, more in-depth discussion that I don't think is out of place, is tonight the school meeting to do that. Because these are going to be judgment calls on what exactly we want our police to do. Because what we have here is we have a full expansion of jurisdiction of our police officers. We do a fantastic job, there's no question about it. But what I don't want to have is mission creep as the years go by. Especially, there's some things that have happened over the last year. So I would like to have a more in-depth discussion on, I'm sorry to catch this early, on what we want our police officers to do. There are stuff to hear about high-speed car chases and all kinds of stuff that we need to really talk about before we discuss and say, okay, Tasby said this should be the case, and we're making it true for our district. Years past, we had board members upset with giving speeding tickets that had nothing to do with schools and promotions. And so, and that was cut off. And so now what we're doing is we're basically expanding our police force to be a police force within the boundaries of our district. Do we want that? I think that we need to have a better, more involved discussion than just passing Tasby's laws, which this change will do.
Certainly, the discussion, I think, is important as it relates to the job duties of our police officers. As it relates to the, excuse me, to the policy, I don't know that we could I don't know that we can institute a local policy to limit the scope of the commission office.
What I'm saying is I don't want to change it. Right now, the way our policy's written, we are limited. I mean, this actually extends the authority of our police officers outside the boundaries of our district. I don't even know if we can do that legally, I guess Tasby does. But that's beside it. I mean, my point, my point is this, is that this is, these are not legally mandated changes as I read. These are changes that Tasby suggests we should make. And what this does is basically says, we now have a police force with all the powers of a sheriff that we're now responsible for. And so my concern is, is will this be mission? And there are some changes in here I think are what we need to do. For example, accordance of law, superintendent, it uses, our policy currently says may not delegate, so leaves some ability for you to do that. Now it says shall not delegate. So I agree with that change, but there's another reason here that there'd be great pause in that we need to decide what we want our police force to do. We know that the current core mission of our police force clearly is to make sure we have safety in our campuses and our district buildings, period. And the question then becomes, and included within that, is making sure people drive within the speed limit around our buildings, ensure our children are protected, et cetera, et cetera. So the question that we need to have as a board is, do we want to expand that? Now, we have certain, you know, and if we do, what do we want the boundaries to be? Because what we have right now is we've now, this balloons out the jurisdiction of our police force to a point where we think is doing one thing, and the next thing you turn around and they've filled up the space with other things. I don't want to talk about things that I shouldn't talk about right now, but we've seen that happen. And so that's my concern, is that we need to talk as a district, what we want our police force to be, and make sure to make sure our policy reflects that. I just suggest if we pulled this part of it, changes to this section, let's reserve it for another board meeting, or else, let's have a discussion. I think it needs a more of a board discussion.
That's fine, I mean, I certainly have no objection to that, and I apologize too for not knowing the policy as intimately as I should. And you're right, tonight's not a discussion, but we will have a discussion.
Yeah, because, you know, I am hearing everything you're saying, but at the same time, I do believe we need to have a discussion because I don't want to make it so narrow that then something happens and then we throw our hands up, that we're not responsible.
I agree with that.
So we need to make it broad enough to where there's no gray area in it, but, so I'm hearing what you're saying, but I just don't want it so narrow that they're not...
Sidney, I agree with you completely, Phil. Right now, if you go back and read what we have in our policy specification, and it's, the question is, and this fundamentally changes, expands, I think, my personal opinion. And so what I would like to do is have a discussion, are we just going to adopt this nilly-nilly? Or do we want to keep some of what we have to limit jurisdiction of our officers, or not? And it's, you know, this is pretty detailed in some areas, so I don't want to take the time to do it tonight. And we can, you know, maybe talk with the general counsel, try to figure out, okay, where's legal things, what do we have to do, et cetera, et cetera, before we get into that sort of discussion.
Neither. How much you, Dr. Stanz? Let me just follow up, okay, just jump back and answer.
I'm just curious, can we carve that out?
Absolutely, the legal, the recommendations to legal are already adopted, so the local, the motion could be made to adopt Date 100 without the local policy changes seeking, and that could be brought back to the next meeting.
Ms. Lopez can make a motion to let the faculty recognize and hold it out, and we'll get to that in a second.
Actually, in Dr. Stanz's opinion, we couldn't tweak it and change it for the needs of the people taking the decisions here. You're saying that we can tweak it?
We can, to Dr. Stanz's point, there are legally commissioned police officers have jurisdiction, so if something happens on campus, there may very well be the need for those officers to do investigations that will go beyond the scope of just our district boundaries with cyber crimes and so forth, that's increasingly the case. So we wouldn't want to limit them so much, they're not able to carry out the functions we need them to.
Dr. Stanz? Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. Did I see any questions, Stanz? Ms. Lopez, do you want to come back with another discussion?
Yes, yes, this is Dr. Stanz, this is page seventy-eight, about three oh three. So that's local, that is local DCE, nonchapter twenty-one contracts.
Excuse us, President, can't we just take that portion out of there, or the rest can't we just take out that K, C, K, and M? I thought that's a lot of split, that you could say what you did.
That would be the simplest way, I think.
Yeah, that's, I've already, I've already written everything.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
This is the point number two I want to talk to Dr. Stanz about, and this is DCE, without the protection of such nonchapter twenty-one contracts.
And Dr. Stanz, I will say that we did have this as informational item last, you know, we've got a week before that, so we've had it for quite a long time.
Basically, what this requires is that the district shall employ nonchapter twenty-one contracts, other positions, director level positions or above, for C, S, B, E certification is not required. It's basically, you know, some of those positions are not required, and so, and this requires us to issue contracts. So my question, Dr. Stanz, is why are we going from made of shell to a perfectly qualified? Some people we get contracts to, some people we don't. They all have service qualifications, proportion of more than you have a couple of them.
The only intent is to just assure consistency that for those specified pay range employees that carry the title of director or beyond, that they be issued nonchapter twenty-one contracts, rather than allowing for the discretion of treating some of those directors with contracts, some of them without contracts. If the position is classified that way, then they're given a nonchapter twenty-one contract.
Are we going to have that set a policy applied for teachers that those contracts are given?
Oh, yes, that, there are no contracts, there are no multi-year contracts.
We have that policy now for chapter twenty-one contracts, but not through these contracts, which is a policy.
I'll stand corrected, because I've operated under the assumption that the policy in place for contract terms apply to all, all employment contracts.
I would suggest that we do, is we, I think we need to make sure this policy reflects that policy because the previous policy of putting the contracts, I think we have the policy, but we discuss chapter twenty-one contracts.
So in other words, the language would be on, on nonchapter twenty-one, one-year contracts?
Well, this is my point. I think that this gives us the interest. There may be some employees in certain positions that won't give longer one-year contracts for these types of positions. There, I mean, there may be, for example, there may be somebody that has specialized skills that are needed in this building, and they won't use their job in private industry to come to this, this would be a longer one-year contract. There's some positions in here that, you know, people don't really care if they're on a contract or not, because they're year to year in, they're on a contract. And so, I think it's just, to me, this gives us, these positions are different than chapter twenty-one positions to kitchen positions. So, it just, the word "shall" gives me great pause, because it's this way of...
Again, the intent, the intent of the use of that word, you see as handcuffs, I see as equitable treatment of a category of a forty... Of a defined category.
Mr. Rush?
You might not know this off the top of your head, but since we apparently have some that are, some that aren't, it's an idea of mixed bag in terms of these level positions referenced in here that are or are not currently employed.
I would have to look at Rick, but I believe, yeah, I believe they all are.
They already all are.
Rick, correct me if I'm incorrect.
On the one year. Non, non, legally you don't have to have a contract, like that's been district's practice. We've had that discussion many times, the way we might let you continue to practice to have to give a contract.
So they all currently are, so they're not technically then inequitable?
Currently, it is not. Rick, back, Rick?
To Mr. Lopez's point, if we prove this the way it reads, we'd have to come back and change the policy if we got to a point where we said, you know, we don't want all those contracts for these nonchapter positions.
I'm just making waves over here. No, it's, you guys, if you guys don't see the same attitude that I have, I'm going to let this go. But, you know, this discussion, you know, I'm actually surprised because we've had this discussion so much.
We've had it tonight, is my problem.
We've had this discussion so much that, you know, we obviously are being equitable, but now what we're doing is we're saying made from shell. Might have a position where we want to throw somebody into one of these positions for a limited time period, to see if they can tread water. Or could we give them a shorter contract, and they have to be one-year contracts? Or is this something we want to pull and talk about somewhere later? I'm fine with it all, I'm fine with even voting on this tonight, but I just wondered, because this is discussed, this issue is discussed so much. this issue is discussed so much, I think this is something that I wanted to draw their attention to just to see if we want to talk about this. If the board's fine, we're, we're ready to move on.
Well, if I may, I, I just want to make this statement. So I, I, I don't object at all to pulling and discussing that, you know, the sky is not going to fall and we can debate it further. I would like to react, though, that, though, that whether it requires aspect certification or not, I, I am not at all aware of any situation where the term of a contract is less than a year. So, I, I guess, I guess that, I'd want to really discuss that, that. Because if our concern, and I think it is, is about attracting and retaining, I don't think that puts us in a very attractive or retention-like mood compared to our competitors.
No, I, I, Dr. Shandor, I agree with you. I mean, we, if we want to attract people, we've got to have the security of the contract. I'm not sure how, uh, I think it limits our ability to attract really good people sometimes if we handcuff ourselves to people to one year deal, but maybe somebody who's a superstar that we can get from the private sector and say, hey, I, I want to get a, you know what? I need a two-year contract or a three-year contract. Maybe it'd be so good that we may want to do that. So if we want to handcuff ourselves to something like a one-year deal, it's, it's not, granted, I, I realize it's not the policy that matters, but, um, will, will there ever be the situation where we say, okay, we're going to give a person a director level position, we don't want to give them a contract? Do we ever see that there, will there ever be situations where that not, that won't happen? If that's going to be the case, then this policy, nobody deals, pass it, move on. If there ever should be a situation that, that will be the case, now we're handcuffed.
Where are you saying that it's, we can't go beyond one year?
No, no, I, I, I just said that the policy doesn't address the width of the contract. It doesn't.
This one doesn't, and I, I don't think the other policies.
No, it doesn't affect this, I know that.
Yeah, okay, I'll get to that, okay.
What, th- this is what drew my, this is what drew my attention. Because, first of all, we talked about this, and secondly, the boarding, we were changing from the boards May to the district to Shaq. In May, we realize that, we, we want to give people contracts. I'm not aware of it with us, never having done it, but, and we need it, but we need to make this change. I'm throwing this out there for discussion.
Okay, well, let me, let me ask.
Let's get the way, let's get the heck out of here.
Yes.
Yeah, we're getting, need to discuss it, what other opinions?
Mr. Russian?
So, piggybacking on, on the last comments we just made, what, Dr. Shandor, what prompted the change? Yes.
Tasby's review of legal policy.
Okay.
But I mean, Tasby, what Tasby does with their recommended changes to local policies, they're really, all they're attempting to do is to best align local policy with legal policy. That's, that's the only reason that they, they recommend changes. In, in, in all of the policies in, in one hundred, we have not recommended any changes from what Tasby does recommend.
Although, I know that Tasby did send out a survey and asked us to answer questions about what our local practice has been, and so we responded that our local practice, we have a procedure that mandated, it was similar language, the district shall provide contracts, non-chapter twenty-one contracts to categories of employees beyond those listed here. And so that was the feedback we gave to Tasby as to what we had been doing. And, um, you know, Mr. Arner and his staff who looked at what that practice was and suggested changing this language to limit it from what our previous procedure was, is to provide more contracts to not only director level, level, but in this program. But there were, um, previously a lot more contracts being issued than what this policy states. And so Tasby's recommendation is that whatever it is we do, that we are consistent and we define it in policy rather than in some, in certain regulation. And then it's very clear everybody's on notice as to what will be issued.
I think that's, that was what I was getting to, where I alluded to what prompted this was, was more of a, more of an explanation of how we got to this point, how Tasby got to this point, and so forth. So that was, thank you.
Mr. Pezz, if you'd like to.
I think, I personally think we should pull it, I think we should pull it and talk about it. Because nothing in this, you know, prevents us from giving a contract to somebody who's not a director level position. We give it, we can give a contract to somebody who changed life, so, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Um, and so, but look, I'm the only one that's spooked by this, don't, yeah. So I think we should, I'm just going to pull it, so, th- this is what I propose, is that we remove C K E local revisions in, in Tasby one hundred, the C K E local would be revision D C E one hundred. And the rest of it, I think.
Okay, that's the motion, that's the amendment, you got a second?
Yes.
So we'll have to vote, you want to tie both of us together?
If it fails, then that will work for all.
Okay. The move is seconded for the amendment, uh, motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so that is now going to be taken out of the Tasby policy motion that we have on the table. That's, uh, seconded, so, any other discussion on policy? Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, well.
The one that's. Seven year, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Next, under governance reports and considerations, we have a report.
Yes, and I have to recommend a change to, uh, board policy P H local that I'm presenting tonight as an information item. The change really very simply eliminates any language, um, that speaks to exceptions to the policy. And I'm, I'm just recommending that the policy simply state that any kind of electronic communications, texting, social media, between teachers and students be limited to communication within a teacher's professional responsibility. Good. We'll bring that back next month for.
Yeah, Mr. Shandor?
Yes.
Yeah, you can ask questions, have a look.
Um, so my question was just, I'm assuming that the code of ethics is part of the employee handle?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, is this for faculty members?
Um, I probably don't wish to, but if, if the policy were to be changed, I agree.
Any other questions? You'll have to, next month, you'll think about it.
Okay.
We will move to, under superintendent's reports, the, I was told, you know, local agreement to after-school services at Lakeland Elementary. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Very.
Discussion, I'm sorry, I can't remember. Mr. Conrad?
My question is, what, first, I really wasn't clear, um, and I'm just going to say what question came out as I was reading, and the first question was how was Lakeland selected? And then it came to reading more of the description that it was some type of grant. There wasn't, there was no information about this program except for in, in the inter-local agreement, it referred to a case manual. So, um, I'm not sure what case is or what the goal of the program is. But also mentioned in the inter-local agreement, item H, states the district agrees to cooperate with evaluation, providing separate, the SARS score, grades, and so forth. So I was just going to be sure about that, not knowing what this program is or what all the three things. And then under item four, I may be reading this wrong, but it says, um, any funds taken by the district that have not been extended by the district by August thirty-first, twenty-fourteen, may be retained by the district. Should that be twenty fifteen?
It would be twenty fifteen, which is the end of the grant. The, um, really, the grant is, is from the Texas Workforce Commission to the Harris County Department of Ed. Harris County Department of Ed then determines on the basis of the, the grant eligibility, that is, who can be served, which campuses in Harris County would fit that profile for disseminating those grants to districts. So that's how Lakeland got identified. One question in my own mind, why Lakeland, not Northville? I, I don't know the answer to that, but, but Harris County Department of Ed is charged from the Workforce Commission to determine the quote eligible campuses. It is strictly for after-school programming. It is not unlike, um, the Twenty First Century Learning Center grant we received from A C D E for upper middle school a few years back. So it's for after-school programming, not just the student care and supervision, but also specific learning activities to be part of that after-school program. We will in turn track where, like used to Y M C A, to actually provide the after-school program, staffing and so forth. So, in effect, we'll receive the grant and then some contracts, the actual work.
Is the, um, is the information that's provided, the records, is that individual or just, uh, are we keeping, like, a summary of results? So evidently they're wanting to track whether it's benefited their activity. So are we giving individual results or share or?
No, there would be the cohort results of the students who participated in the program compared to those students who did not participate.
Mr. Russian? With Lakeland Y involved, um, I guess my question is, is are we already contracted with the after-school programs? Does this offset any expense that we've already shed to the Y for after?
No, because our, our traditional after-school program with the Y is tuition or scholarship. So we're, we're not paying the Y anything to provide that program. This program is the, Lakeland?
Actually, Dr. Shandor, in this case, we, um, we do pay the Y. It's a combination of, um, both a reduced parental charge and the district funding and so that this grant, I will go to reverse the district or, um, if you are, you know, wait.
Wait, for this program, not the other twenty-seven after-school programs.
Yeah, for his candidates, for his parents.
That's, that's what I was trying to say, that for the twenty-seven programs we have in place, we don't pay the Y for Y charges to tuition or fundraises to provide scholarships to students. For this program, we are going to pay the Y, and indeed, then it will be reversed, either way.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All those in favor? Mr. Shandor?
Yes, but.
Seven, seven year.
Favor?
That's a quick, that's a, yeah. And we'll move down to, uh, learning division, services. The next one is, that was pulled for individual, was the expenditure for college board. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, okay, discussions.
In the description provided, it says, uh, the college board provides the college readiness, a resource to increase college readiness. Um, every eighth grade student takes a latest step, every tenth grade student takes D F A T. In, in this, it says, um, professional development memberships and data extract files will be purchased from the college board. Does this also include that testing fee? Is that part of this for that section?
That's all, and, and this includes anything we anticipate paying to the college board for anything business due.
Okay, and professional development with the college board, do we have to, uh, do our A P instructors have to go through a certain professional development that's provided only by the college board?
College board does provide, is the provider of advanced placement, teacher, professional development. And so we, I won't say that we send every A P teacher because we're not able to, but we try on a rotating basis to keep A P teachers going to college board, A P professional development. And this does include that.
So do we have any kind of model where, since we don't send everyone now that we have our advanced academics department, is there like a training trainer type thing? Or you can kind of sustain it and hold on to it?
Well, we do that already, but that doesn't, that does not substitute for common board training. The college board, quite frankly, doesn't subscribe to a trainer of trainers.
And they change it just enough so that it will happen?
There, there are so, good solos.
Any questions? Okay, no other discussion, move to votes, all those in favor? Seven year. Okay, next up, we have purchases regarding the international, international vocabulary organization. Motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, move in seconded. Uh, discussion, sit and start, are you ready to pull this?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I am first and foremost not prepared to support this with some caveats, and that's why I wanted to pull it. Mr. Cunningham and I had the opportunity to visit the I B headquarters in Bethesda, Maryland. I think it was in two thousand and twelve. Very impressed with the program, very impressed with the organization, uh, the, the idea of best practices and the rigor, et cetera. Uh, I was asked at that point in time, what do I think about the program? And, and I was quite honest, I like the program, but it cannot survive in its current, the way we're currently using it, the number I S D. Two years later, I feel like that we're in the same position. My personal opinion, we're in the same position as we were two years ago, if not going backwards. When you look at the three-year audit that you can all see online, when you look at, or the three-year plan and the internal audit, uh, numbers in just about every category have gone down, uh, whether it's, whether you're looking at exams taken, certificates, diplomas, et cetera. We have a comparison group that we look at, uh, from a standpoint of socioeconomic demographics and so forth, and, and my opinion, we're not keeping up with that peer group either. But we, as a board, have talked about considerably over the last two years, who are we comparing ourselves to? Are we comparing ourselves to just a few districts around us, the state, the nation, et cetera? And when you start expanding how we compare our I B program to other programs around the state other than that peer group, uh, we get further behind. So. So we have children that's involved in the program right now. It wouldn't be fair to them to cut the program at all. Several students in the past have gone on to do great things. The program is a fantastic program for those reasons. But as a school district and as stewards of the public money, we have to make sure that we are using, using the resources that we have to its best benefit. And until I see evidence that the IB program is working, going forward, I'm going to have a hard time supporting the program. Again, as it sits right now, I'm willing to support it for another year until I see the evidence that we're going to be able to bring more students into the program, our successful numbers are going to go up, et cetera, uh, and, and reverse this trend, this downward trend that we're seeing right now. And, uh, that's really all I have to say about it at this point in time. Uh, but it's a great program if it's, if it's meeting the objectives itself.
Can I answer? Mr. Rush?
I'll just add, um, I guess just as I'm looking at this specific item, that, you know, two, two different conversations, I think, I, I give them a sense of, sort of, a bit of welcome and participate in that discussion. As I see this agenda, I know it's simply for items that are needed as the program is going this year to support it until we make another decision otherwise, but, uh, sort of support the conversation.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, uh, pretty good comment today. Mr. Sidney and I have, have made a statement since about two thousand twelve. And I am, uh, in support of the program while I would probably say that, uh, this does cause a little conversation. I don't know if you've got a, well, let's put it this way, is a year enough time? Some things that I would ask. Being the fact that, in my opinion, we kind of started, uh, putting a cart before a horse by having the program at the high school and then filtering down to the middle school and elementary school. And so let's look at the total time that we've had this whole program, uh, in place at the time we're trying to get it, get where it needs to be. Where is that out of nothing? But when we talk about supporting the program, I, I do support it and I think it's going to be needed, especially where it's at. But I will go with the board on the decision on when we've gone far enough. At this point, I only see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on here. I, I equate that to fifty dollar, fifty thousand a campus. That's what I would get. Continue on. Somebody needs to correct me if I'm wrong. Can't be Dr. Price, but that'll be at another time. At this point, I, I do hear, but we've talked about it, we've seen the program in action from a nation's standpoint, but also a state standpoint. So, uh, hopefully we can do what we need to do. Mr. Carpen?
Thank you, sir. I, I just wanted to, uh, in this one also chime in that, yeah, I've had some concerns with how this has gone. And my biggest concern, I shared it with Mr. Sidney, but I gave him bad comments, he's asked us to go through, uh, the program plans and three-year plans. And the one thing that was glaring to me in the plan was that over the three-year plan, it really didn't address anywhere how we were going to expand the program and reach critical masses, I don't think we're at. And, and that just sort of left me cold that here was a three-year plan that really didn't address how this program was going to get from point A to point B and possibly point C. So I think that's, that's a huge hole in, in that plan. And I, I would go a step farther, uh, Mr. Sidney, to say that we need to set a, set a party date. Maybe even now to think that by this spring, we expect the administration to come back to us with maybe a revamp plan as to whether or not this program, the way it exists, the way it may exist, and if you're going to have students coming out, I don't know if it is, but I have a concern that always, you seem to always, it's late, it's late. But we need to come back and sit and talk as board as to, based on your recommendations to us, uh, this spring, what, what do we do following? Do we continue the program or do we not? Do we continue it at high school, uh, or just middle school and elementary, or none of the above? I, I don't know the answer. And I, I agree, this is a great program. It not only has a lot of prestige for the district, but that aside, we do, as Mr. Sidney made mention, we are stewards of the, uh, the public's funds, and we have to make sure we're getting the return, that we can justify spending the money and the resources and other resources on the program.
Just, if I may, just a second. I, I don't know if we need to get a report from the administration. We do have a program evaluation committee. And I, I'd really like to see us move, uh, we, we, we started down this path, and I think with all due respect, I, I think, I think we can, we have to look into it.
Okay. All I guess I was getting to, and that would be great to come out of, uh, the program evaluation committee, but I, I just would like to at least attach a time, a milestone date to that.
Understood.
By this point in time, we're, we're going to have some information. If we can make a decision for next budget.
Understood. Yes.
Just, just to piggyback on that, that's, that's in my opening remarks earlier tonight. That's when I said that we were going to begin interviews with the, the directors of various programs to get clarification on their plans and, and so forth. So that way we can have all the information that we need to come back to the board, uh, with a, with a bona fide recommendation.
No, thank you, sir. Anything else? Motions and seconded? All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, next, we have staying in this category, consideration of, uh, purchases specifically for Abbott. Okay, any motions?
Second.
Second. Okay. Now, we can open the discussion.
I just have a few comments about, uh, the Abbott program. Uh, once again, it's a program that, uh, I'm very familiar with. I actually even have a student, a child that's involved in the program. Uh, and I just wanted to make it public before we voted on this. If you looked at the, at the, uh, the audit report, and I thought this was a very interesting statistic, one hundred percent of the Abbott seniors were accepted to one or more four-year colleges. And I, I don't know if y'all saw that or not, but, uh, it's there and, uh, very impressive. I know we have some Abbott folks in the audience, and, uh, I didn't pull it for that reason. I planned on pulling it already, just to make y'all aware that if you haven't seen it yet. There's fifteen, almost sixteen hundred students in the Abbott program, and, uh, it's at fourteen, uh, fourteen secondary campuses and I think two elementary campuses right now. Still growing. So, uh, now I just want to make some comments before we vote.
No, I appreciate that. Sidney's awareness, uh, in the audience, and, uh, and everybody remember that just at the end of last year, when, uh, General Wood, uh, Middle got, uh, made a national, in most cases, laboratory, really truly, I guess is really what you call it. And that's, that's just great. I just want to remind everybody about that. So great, great work. Okay, any other discussions? Thank you, Sidney, for your comments. Okay. All of those in favor? Seven zero. All right. Next item, still in this category, is purchases regarding bridges transition. I'm sorry, but I have to nod here. Is this Conrad? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. No, no. We need a motion. Someone, Mr. Rush, a second. Okay, now.
Uh, my question was just had to, is the length, uh, this is for three years or this, it says length of limit three years? So this is the, is this amount year one of three years or this is the three-year amount?
This is one, one-year amount of the three, of a three-year, I believe.
So Sidney, I'm not contracted this, this is like six thousand?
It's thirty-two thousand, not two thousand, two thousand.
Forty-two thousand, sixty, plus ninety-six. Math investigation. But that's, that's, that's the, that's the issue. We're going to contract this to be ninety-six thousand?
No, I mean annually, we could break the cut.
Okay, all right. Never mind. I'm sorry, you took your time.
I, I do have a question, and, and I tried to go back, but I do have a day job, and I couldn't find it. I think, I think it's in the CTE audit where they, they're using figures of students that are using bridges. Dr. Price, do you, or do you remember seeing that? They were using percentage. I'm not, I didn't want to put you on the spot because I couldn't find it right off the bat. But the question I've got is, in that audit, it was showing a, a, a relatively low percentage of students that were actually accessing bridges. Do we have a, a number, a percentage? Uh, I know we're shooting for, you know, the vast majority of students, but if this audit didn't show that for some reason.
I, I believe right now we're purchasing code groups by, by, uh, high school.
And that's what I thought, that's what I thought. So when I was looking through this, it just, it didn't make sense to me, and that's why I wanted to get some clarification before we vote. Okay. And then just, uh, I guess as a side note, uh, I think people really do now understand that we are reading those audits and those three-year plans.
I think it'd be helpful to have, uh, maybe some usage, more detailed usage information. Are they just accessing for regulation, are they once a year or twice a year? Or are they you as intended to have, but they should be, or career planning? Which I think they are. It'd be nice if we could show that to maybe some.
No other discussion? Indeed, we'll put this to the vote. All those in favor? Seven zero. Also in this category, we have the motion on first in math online program.
Whoa.
The move, second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Mr. Rush, you go ahead.
I heard a lot about this, uh, program. Um, I guess my first question is, it seems to be inconsistently either available or pushed or used by one, some of the schools. And so I guess the first comment on, uh, what is the expectation of first in math? Cause I'm hearing some discrepancies just across same grade, the grade levels, different schools, and generally the same area. And then two, um, of those schools that are using it or pushing it for one reason or another over another school. Is it working? Is there any usage reports? What, what can we look at to understand, you know, whether or not this is, is worth investment or not? Just cause I just hear it.
And as you answer that, also, uh, the difference between that and the Kink's through math program, that's a thing a lot of kids has to be afraid of.
So the, uh, will, will we generate, and I'm going to say usage data, I don't know if that's really the proper label, but, but, but will generate, uh, more stats for you on, on, uh, first in math? There is no question. The idea, the objective was because of the popularity of the program and the cost, it serves as a supplement to the curriculum, that we wanted to make it accessible, have licenses so that it would be accessible to all elementary students and all the elementary campuses. Of course, like most other things in my experience, it's, it, you can provide a resource and then to the extent to which the resource is used is going to be tremendously dependent on who's the teacher working with that group of students or, or campuses have, have initiated their own campus level competitions, uh, you know, for after-school usage and completion of tests and all that kind of stuff keeps on going. So I, Mr. Rush, it just doesn't surprise me that, that there's a wide range of usage. But my, my perception, we'll generate the data and see if it supports my perception, is that pretty universally among the elementary schools, uh, this has proven to be a popular number. Um, and, and the feedback from teachers and parents has also been positive. The, uh, and I'm kind of emphasizing that because, uh, because there's some, going back a year ago, two years ago, there, there was something out there about our not being able to afford to continue to offer it. Oh my, did we get a reaction to that? So, so we have to run out of our way because it's quality and because there's demand to be sure that it, it is offered at all.
So that's, um, just to follow from what Dr. Spandau said, I was one of those parents, uh, when I heard that we weren't willing to be able to afford it, to, to kind of get it to his ear a little bit about it. And, and I can tell you my personal experience with first in math, my, uh, now eleven-year-old son, uh, when he was the age doing this, you know, a lot of schoolwork, um, I don't think is necessarily geared towards boys necessarily. It's his family, uh, who's, uh, at least my son, his friends are competitive kids. First in math, they were so competitive with each other, uh, with this stuff. They would come home, run to the computer, get on this thing and start, and this is all the kids in the room. And, and, you know, work, work these pro, work these problems. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. I heard that we were going to cut some funding from it at the time. I kind of leaned into Dr. Spandau pretty hard about it, told him, I thought it's one of the best things to be offered for our elementary schools, we need to expand it. And I think the experience has shown is that it's a great program. And, um, and from my own personal experience, I think it's one. And so, um, I agree with like one parent, or at least a parent that goes dozens and dozens and dozens of parents at one particular school where everyone loved it, uh, but I think that has been the same reaction district.
So, Rush, so I would just add that, I mean, that's, that's the feedback I've heard too, with only one exception. So if it, I just, I would like it to be utilized more. I mean, if it's a great tool, how do we get more consistent in its application across the district? Cause I can tell you, you know, my kid is now at two grade levels and never heard of it before. And, you know, and so, so it's just this question, how do we get consistent?
Yeah, and, and I just want to restate, I don't want to speak to the thing too now, at least try to. As a supplemental resource, um, Mr. Rush, I would not advocate getting to the report to the place where it would be required or mandated at all. In my view, it really, to some extent, defeats the purpose of having the resource. I mean, uh, the objective is really to get folks motivated and seeing the benefits so that, uh, so that principals will get excited, the teachers get excited as they see the results and their kids. Just like as I say, maybe for the first time, getting hyper about newer damn instead of a video game. So we'll continue to head down that track, and I think it will be very helpful when we generate some stats on usage and results because that will be able to pinpoint better where, where there may be some inactivity.
Is it, can it be accessible to anybody regardless of whether a teacher is, is a resource?
Yeah, the passwords, I mean, I don't know if it's password driven or however, however the kids are able to log in, but, but that, you know, the district first, other campuses next, or, or the keepers of the licenses, other pastors. And so the answer is yes. are the keepers of the licenses, of the passwords, and so, the answer is yes, but we have to know that somebody's being denied access, and then we can see to it that they did it.
Sidman, before you answer her other question, I just have to say that my family's watching this at home, and I just got a text message, "We love first in math." So, for what it's worth, they're watching and they love it, so I'm for it.
I'm surprised, we say, why can't we have that at high school, noodles instead?
So, think through, I mean, think through them.
Think through them?
Yeah, there are, that is not universally available, used at all of the elementary campuses, there are some, maybe more than some, that are using it, I obviously don't know the exact number, but it's one of a number of available first-in math-like software, web-based software programs, that either a campus or a teacher has gotten excited about, or been aware of, and now have been able to attract, get the funds to buy the licenses or the passwords. First in math is going to deliver district admission. Think through that, that's not.
My other question has to do with funding, nothing to do with that, but the funding source is the instructional material, and this is just new ones, I understand that. I thought that the instructional material that's turned in is summer, so does that work like our budget, if we just need an amendment to it, or something to add? I don't know if we can do that, but we'll submit it, this way.
No, so, help me. So, you're right, we get the IMA allocation, and then determine how, whether we spend the money, that what we spend on is reported to the, to TEA. But this action, which is coming a couple of months later, and the sequence is that way, frankly, the concept, the timing of new CH was adopted, this is really asking you for authorization to spend the money you've already approved and budgeted for us to spend, up to a sum certain for this fiscal year. So, that's why when we look at, when you look at, in this case, ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, it's a up to, it's a not to exceed. In most of those instances, the way, at least administratively, we're bringing CH recommendations to you, we're estimating on the high side of what the expenditure would be, because we don't wanna come back to you again. Until next, so, so don't translate, I guess, is what I'm asking, that number to okay budget or less. It's really not the intent.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Dr. Sconzo, you'll bring the board, because I know it's had to do with timing, virginity, license, return to you.
So, this is the annual ABK report, that we must provide to you, according to Texas Education, Texas Education Code, Chandra Torres would be here to do that, but Chandra, I believe, is hours away from delivering. So, obviously, it's better she's not. So, you have the report, and you see the numbers, the various languages that are represented on our campuses, which continues to be a growing population of students, as well as a pretty high number of different languages that are spoken, well brought into our schools. So, Mr. President, if trustees have any questions, I'll find the other trouble to respond, if you simply acknowledge, we see.
If I have any other questions, Dr. Sconzo, it's hard to, which country it was in, it's one of these students.
This is not Jim.
Okay.
I mean, I can't even.
No, I'm joking.
But we were here this morning, I mean, it's just, maybe it's just amazing to me, but we're here visiting this morning, and we're in a, three children just enrolled yesterday from rush, and family doesn't speak English, and children, those people weren't in English.
My daughter can't even, she knows what yet means.
Oh, is that right? But we, we obviously track.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you maybe to explain that? And that's what I thought, when you first, that's why I started to get open.
All right, hold on a second.
That's okay. So, back up one to, I'm jaded.
You don't need to vote, but please let the record show, we should, we have paid and heard the number that we should report. Engineering, the item, the item before that is also informational, that's not action, but it is one of the expenditures that literally got caught in the transition from old CH to new CH, so we're just reporting to you what we anticipate spending on eligibility, and it requires no action, we're quiet. But in the spirit of CH, we do, we wanna keep things public and transparent.
Any questions on that? I know Dr. Sconzo explained it, any comments to us with the board? Just go ahead. Okay, and that takes us, there's no other items left. Okay, so last, under the financial report section, are all the package of financial reports, so, any questions for Dr. Sconzo on the cash flow report, investment reports, and all the rest, C H one? Okay. None? We are, we are pretty actively general. Okay, and last, but certainly not least, any future board business you would like us to consider, drive into the parking lot, put on the table, whatever you want, whatever metaphor you might use. With that, okay, call it a night, thank you very much.